Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Mayor Ireland and Council, Mr. Given and staff. Public, welcome to our meeting today. I call the meeting to order at nine thirty. The municipality of Jasper respectfully acknowledges that Jasper National Park and the municipality of Jasper are treaty six and made territories, as well as made to region four. This land is Kishna territory, meeting ground, gathering place, trapping road, and home for the D M A and lay table. Yaha, Anusha, Sukaha, Sohni and Koda. Now, a call for any additions to the agenda. Councilor Hall?
I just had a change. I don't know how important it is, but it has my name as Deputy Mayor and Chair. That should be you. I don't know if that has to be noted.
Thank you, Deputy. Thank you, Councilor Hall, for stepping in for me and Mayor Ireland for stepping into my meetings over the last two weeks. No other additions to the agenda. A call for two more. Councilor Mount Lake, all in favor? Carriage. The minutes of March eighth were circulated. Is there any errors on those minutes? If not, I just noticed one thing when I was reviewing them last night. Mayor Ireland left the room for both presentations. Two motions were made, and it said six councillors approved, but unfortunately I was away, so it should be five. May I call for somebody to approve those minutes? Councilor Hall, all in favor? Thank you. Any business arising from those minutes? Sorry, Mayor.
Let's find out. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller and B. Just on the letter that was to be, is to be sent regarding grants in place of taxes. Note that the minutes reflect that council considered writing the letter to the Minister of Municipal Affairs. And I think, in fact, the letter that I drafted is to the Minister of Finance. With, with permission of council, I'll just send it on. I think it was a financing, and I'm not sure whether it was just misarticulated or misreported, but just for certainty, the Minister of Municipal Affairs will be copied with that letter that will be directed to finance, which has instituted the reduction in payments of grants in place of taxes. And that will be the direct recipient of that letter with copies, as I said, to the Minister of Municipal Affairs, but also to the Premier and to our own.
Mr. Madon?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller and B. We did note that difference in the minutes and what was set at the meeting is what is included in those minutes. And I believe it was at the following council meeting that Mayor Ireland indicated that he would write a letter. So it's just a, a record of what happened, what things changed after that.
Mr. Madon? Anything else arising from minutes? Any further decisions? If not, move on to more business. Sidewalk seating, non-pressural teams to get up.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller and B. So administration is here with a recommendation for council of what describes sidewalk seating for the 2022 season. And on, on February eighth, the community will provide some direction to administration on how the minister will sidewalk seating for 2022, including a number of, a number of points specifically with the intention of providing certainty for businesses and enabling applications that are consistent with parks, architectural design motif, being multi-year intervals, that there was some way of accommodating legacy installations to provide some ability for businesses to transition from our past couple of pilot years. That administration identified ways to simplify the renewal process for existing applications. And that administration identified an opportunity for an avenue to appeal for applicants whose submissions are judged not to be business. And also council provided some direction on the fee that should be charged for, for, for the use of that public space. So administration has worked with Parks Canada and internally monks administration to come back to committee with some recommendations. And just at this point, I want to highlight, obviously, local business stakeholders are, are voice in this, as is the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce. It is a bit challenging, of course, to coordinate that many different stakeholders in a timely manner. And administration's priority for this forward today is really to ensure it gets to the public agenda through the council process so that there is some certainty for businesses. As you'll see, we're providing a recommendation that provides for some transition for businesses that had installations the last couple of years, but also provides a longer timeframe of approval for businesses that wish to continue in the future. So we think that we struck both those. We appreciate that there may still be a lot of discussion in the community about exactly what this should look like. But really, our priority for this forward was to establish certainty for the 2022 season so that people could see that because we know that businesses need to be able to make their plans for the year, especially if they're going to be renovating or changing. I think, as you'll see, the administrative recommendation here provides that flexibility. So our recommendation is that committee direct administration will apply for discretionary use permit for sidewalk seating, including the parameters as described in the attachment. And we do have some alternatives for committee to consider. Of course, committee can vary the parameters that administration is proposing. And committee could direct administration open the sidewalk seat program for applications without submitting discretionary use permit application to parks through that process. I'll maybe turn it over to Mr. Madon to speak to the conditions that are attached to the program. And between she and I, we can discuss the process considerations and recommendations that administration can. Christine Morton?
Thank you, Mr. Given. As outlined in the recommendation, what administration has brought it forward would be that administration applied for a discretionary use permit with Parks Canada for sidewalk seating. So our permit would cover all the installations that would be installed up to 2024. And the conditions are attached to the report, which the proposed conditions currently are that installation will only be permitted from May fifteenth to October twentieth, which does match the season where patio seating is possible in, in, on Jasper streets and also for our operations department to be able to do road maintenance and sweep parking lanes and not end up in a situation where we have snow on the roads still around May first, for example. Installations shall only be located on the sidewalk with pedestrian sidewalk extensions located in the parking lane. So that is the boardwalk concept where the traffic from the sidewalk would be rerouted in the parking lane. And then item three is regarding, I think, what we could qualify as the architectural motif, so that all structures must be wooden, and there are some minimum and maximum heights for different items. Tents and signage, including logos, not being permitted. So again, that is a motif item that is driven by how the community should look from a land use planning and development perspective. Jersey barriers will not be permitted. Patio umbrellas without logos permitted on site and must be neutral in color with a few examples of the colors that would be acceptable. And importantly, item seven is for the 2022 season, that non-conforming installations that were previously approved in twenty one, in 2021 be accepted. And so that would allow businesses to continue running patios the way that they have in 2020 and 2021 arguably. And with the exception of tents not being possible to install and umbrellas and jersey barrier confirming with the motif. So not displaying any advertising, logos, or any non-conforming colors. So we're hoping that this clause would allow businesses to essentially do a few tweaks from what they did in 2021, but still continue to have that setup for 2022. And anyone who wishes to comply with the other conditions would, could receive approval for up to 2024. Everyone else would be a one-year approval only. So those are the conditions that Mr. Given and Parks Canada staff work with together and that we feel are, have a, have a good chance of being accepted by Parks Canada if we are to go with the process and the recommendation we are putting forth is, is supported by council. And that's it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Given.
Thanks very much, Christine. So Deputy Mayor Keller and B, maybe I'll just speak through what administration is recommending as a process here. Christine, it's back to right. We've worked through those conditions with Parks Canada to identify what is likely to be supported through their permitting and approvals process. And so you'll see a little bit of a flow chart contained in the report. Essentially, administration is proposing that it started at the top of that, that the municipality of Jasper would apply for community-wide discretionary use permit with parks that would essentially contain those conditions that are listed in the attachment. That would be reviewed by Parks and or P D A, and they would approve or deny that application based on that, what we believe would be approval because and we sort of preclude this to a certain extent, Parks, the M O J would be able to open up applications and the administrative decision-making process, you know, if an application comes in from a business, we'd be able to look and say, is it fully consistent with the approved development permit? That Parks has sort of sanctioned it is, then they are, that application can be approved for term up to October thirty first of 2024. So that provides that long-term certainty for businesses. And we're able to apply that because we know that's consistent with something that Parks has approved. If an application comes in that is not consistent with those sort of long-term, that long-term approach, the applicant has the ability to appeal our administrative judgment on that. And the appeal body would be municipal council. So somebody comes and says, well, no, I think that this, my submission should be qualified for the long-term approval. And here's why. Administration would bring it forward, that application to council, that it can be the whole meeting. Council would then hear administration's view of why it is not consistent with what we had approved by Parks. They would be able to hear from the applicant about what the applicant feels that it shouldn't be allowed. And then council would be able to make judgment on that. Should council feel that they wanted to support something that was materially different from what had been approved by Parks, then council would give direction to administration to apply for an amendment to our development permit with Parks, which would take forward through the regular process. So there is avenue of appeal, so it doesn't mean that something comes forward to. We're intentionally setting up a structure that enables recourse for somebody directly to their elected officials from council. If somebody says administration, municipal administration is judged that my thing doesn't fit, and I think that's unfair. We say, no problem. We're not here standing in your way. Council can be the judge of whether that was fair or not, or appropriate or not. And if council judges that it should be approved for the longer term, then administration may have some work to do with amending our approved help process. So it does allow for that appeal process that fits within Jasper's unique legislative context with our sort of, you know, cross jurisdictional issues. If the applicant didn't wish to appeal administration's decision and said, well, fine, I'll just do what I did last year. Then we could approve them for 2022 season. So there are, there's that bottom right. If somebody's seeking long-term certainty and they think that their thing should fit, they can appeal at the council, then they say, well, that's fine. I'll just do what I think for, for next year, I'm sorry, for this year. Then they can just use it without that short-term approval. So I hope that, I hope that muddy the waters there. I hope that the flow chart helps explain it. But administration wants seating to get this to the council table so that we would be able to provide some sort of hit direction from council on which approach you'd like to take. So we can in turn provide some certainty to the community for business owners.
Thank you, Sean. Council, questions?
As soon as I was missing, I have a question. So my understanding, like reading everything and from watching, that this coming summer, if you don't have frontage on front of your restaurant, you can set up on street as before. But going forward down the road, then that's not allowed anymore. Am I correct?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Keller and B. That's, that's exactly what the administration is proposing. The, well, sorry, let me clarify. The recommendation here is, does provide that exception. So for the 2022 season only, if somebody wished to say, we'll continue as they did in 2021, that's possible with that exclusion of tents, umbrellas, advertising colors. Going forward, if someone is seeking a longer term approval, if they wish to locate on the sidewalk adjacent to other businesses, they would need approval of those businesses to go forward. So that would require some discussion, negotiation, or some discussions between adjacent businesses. Because some businesses may not wish to have a frontage blocked. Other businesses, as we've actually heard over the course of last year, may find it is a benefit to have, you know, patrons sitting directly there holding in their business, one of those that are animal rights. But that would be up to the business owners to negotiate. Administration is not, as you can see in the conditions, does not prevent anybody from locating anyone on sidewalk, but they would need that approval. And our municipal permitting process has required that they have approvals on their adjacent businesses.
That's true. Mr. Morton?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller and B. I just want to understand points five and seven in the attachment. You said that in this discussion, if businesses chose to use the same setup that they had last year and be in the parking lane, and they have jersey barriers on that parking lane, the conditions indicate you can be in the parking lane, but you can't use jersey barriers. How does a business address that?
Go ahead, Mr. Madon.
Yeah, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller and B. So, so to be clear, points two to six in the conditions, the best way to think about those would be if you want to have, as a business, if you want to have certainty for your installation, like for 2024, you must meet points two to six. Right? Like if something meets two to six, you're good to go. We can easily, we can approve you until twenty twenty four. If you want to do something different, including jersey barriers, seating in the parking lane, or anything, then you would sort of, you exercise, you can exercise the single year approval that's provided for out of number seven. So basically, number seven is kind of your continue with what you've been doing, but you only get approval for one year. So in your example, Councilor Mount, somebody who had previously had seating in the parking lane surrounded by jersey barriers could say, I would like to do that again in 2020. To say, okay, that's allowed for under condition number seven, but you're only getting approval for one.
Mr. Madon, I'm curious. So was this came down from Parks Canada as one of the conditions that we can all remember around this evening on the street?
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller and B. So this is, this, there's some discussion back and forth between Parks and municipal administration. There are a variety of views about where the ideal place is. I think there's a desire to have a consistent approach across the municipality, considering different assessments of risk, both from moving vehicles and the potential risk of the general wall of passing through food service quarters. So I think within our municipal administration, there's a, the view that the the least amount of risk is to have either very large physical separations like jersey barriers if you go located in parking lanes, or even better, have people not located so close to moving vehicles. And so that's where the preference to have the location on sidewalks arises from. Additionally, my understanding is that other health services local staff either have an opinion or condition that suggests that there are preferences that food service staff shouldn't be sort of having that much crossing with general public that are not actually sitting with food service. So there are preferences that the exit, you know, that is more adjacent to this, which you can't. So it is a bit of an internal struggle to be, to be really frank with you, there are certainly different assessments of risk and what we should be concerned about. I think there's general agreement that the smallest amount of risk comes when the installations are placed on the sidewalk and pedestrians walk around.
Just I've been in the States for two weeks, and I was quite surprised when I was in Palm Springs, of how many restaurants were actually in the parking lane. And it's such a senior society, and people walk the dogs, people walk the carts, families with strollers. And it worked flawlessly. It was amazing to watch. And I mean, oh, it can work. Like, I was truly amazed that how well I saw it in another community working, that I'm so surprised that we're taking that a lot.
Well, and Deputy Mayor Keller and B, to be clear, this is administration's recommendation, which, you know, I think is administration's responsibility is to be, to try to eliminate as much risk as possible. We, you know, want to point out that in the report, there is the opportunity for committee to vary any of these conditions. And, and then we can take forward those to our, to the process that we're recommending here. But that's, that's with intention, you know, that is council's process and we're representative of the community of businesses saying, what do you think would work for Jasper? And so if council wishes, maybe wishes to vary any of the conditions, you can just simply do so.
Questions? Councilor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller and B. I have a couple of questions. Who determines motif? Is it, is it within our local parks? Or is it federally?
So Deputy Mayor Keller and B for Councilor Hall, I know there are other people that know a lot more about the park's motif. My understanding is that the park's motif is a set of guidelines rather than necessarily a requirement that indicates what should happen rather than what is required. And it is broadly applied by Parks to ensure that there is a generally a consistent approach to the, to the overall visual step. I'm not certain that it has legislative standing, and I believe that it is from the sixties, the original document that is sort of still floating around is from the sixties. I think that there is a internal land use policy that may supersede it, but it's not actually federally adopted. And so the existing legislation is quite dated. The motif is, I think explicitly a guideline and not enshrined in the laws. Mayor probably knows more about it than me, but, and if I portray that inaccurately, I would like to be correct. Just make sure that I understand.
Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller and B. I will comment that just to get factual information on the table. And again, my facts might be subject to review as well. And I say this, I hesitate to engage yet because I don't want to debate with administration or what works before us. I do have some other questions. And this might become a matter of debate in council. However, the, the regulations which govern are nineteen sixty eight regulations. The most recent iteration of architectural motif guidelines is nineteen ninety seven, I believe. And I think I made this point a few weeks ago, February eighth. I, I struggle to understand how architectural motif guidelines can be applied at all to use. Nobody is applying for a development permit. Architectural motif guidelines may have their place in our community or in the community. But how in the world does that document apply to the use of space? If it does, then perhaps nobody can have a red umbrella in the background. To me, it is an inappropriate use of, of a document that was never designed for this purpose. It was designed for, in my view, development applications, not for use of sidewalks or, or parking areas. I, I will leave it there. It, it is, I suppose, well, they are architectural motif guidelines for the town of Jasper. So they apply here. I can't say that whether or not there are similar motif guidelines in other park communities. And I don't think they would apply because that has its own power over land use planning and development. So specific, but federal in a sense, I don't. They, they get applied at the local level and interpreted and opinions are expressed. But why they ought to be expressed on land use rather than something that actually requires an architect when they're architectural motif guidelines, misprised me.
I think I have one more question. I can think of a restaurant or two that wouldn't have an option of having their patio seating right in front of their space due to bike racks or benches or garbage cans. Will there be options for them?
Thanks very much, Councilor Hall, through Deputy Mayor Keller and B. I think we would have to look on a site-by-site basis. Administration certainly will be willing to work with businesses. I think that the primary consideration would be first agreement among the businesses in the local area that they're willing to support that, that use of the sidewalk. We have to recognize that this is from where you do your sidewalk, it's mine, but it starts to intrude into somebody else's sidewalk. That's where it's valid to ensure there's some, some discussion between businesses and what kind of apartment. But when it comes to municipal infrastructure, to the extent that it can be, which not all can, we're not cutting down into street trees or anything like that. And there are some good reasons why certain types of street infrastructure, garbage cans are located at certain points where we have high pedestrian, it's like a fossil, it's a natural point of garbage collection. And I've said that, it's not as little if they're immovable, and administration will work with businesses on a site-by-site basis to see what they do to vary that. If they had agreements with their adjacent businesses and relationships.
Welcome, sir. Welcome, Councilor Madon.
Please excuse my curdges and minor obstacles.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller and B. Through you two, Mr. Given, I began a preface by saying I, I have no intent and no desire to enter to debate with administration. But before council enters debate, I just want to clarify administration's understanding on a couple of points in the remarks. Firstly, I, I do appreciate that the recommendation, this recommendation that administration feels will be accepted or is likely to be accepted by Parks and, and much of that is what drives the recommendation. My question is this, if, if council directs administration to apply for a discretionary use permit, including the parameters in Schedule A, is council not then required on appeal to apply and not deviate from those conditions? So that, what is the point of appeal if council has said these are the conditions and somebody says, yeah, but I'm different. I, I need some relaxation? If council has already accepted the conditions, what parameters will council have to then vary the conditions from an administrative perspective?
Go ahead, Mr. Given.
Yeah, I don't know from an administrative perspective, worship, that there's, you know, justification. I think it's, it's about a fairness perspective. The council wishes to recognize the desire, including to vary council's position on something about what should go forward. I mean, this really is council describing what it thinks is appropriate for Jasper. And if the conditions list to go on, if that should make sense to council, then say so. And if somebody comes, a business comes to council at some point in the future and says, well, sure, you said that these, you know, these conditions points, you know, one to six for what makes sense of Jasper. Here's what I want to do. Here's why it makes sense of Jasper. And then the argument to council, and council says, okay, sure, we, we accept that. That's, that's a fine point. Our legislative context doesn't mean that council can't simply change or develop. We would go back to party, say, well, we know we applied for conditions one to six. But we would like to, council's judge appropriate to do something here. And so we would like to amend or approve. So, Your Worship, it is a bit cumbersome. I think in any other community, if council approved a set of rules and somebody came forward and said, well, the rules don't make sense. I'd like to change the rules. Council would have the authority to say, you know, hear that argument and judge whether it makes sense or not. Say, well, you're right. That argument makes sense. We're going to change the rules. Here in Jasper, council can set the rules in a way, still need them to be sanctioned by somebody else through Parks Canada. And so council on a good argument chooses to change or amend the rules that it's approved. We still need to go through that process to the other, to the other part. So it is a bit cumbersome, admittedly, but I think it does include an opportunity for the community to come forward to their elected officials and make an argument about what should and shouldn't. It was the best that administration could come up with in our unique legislative context.
If I might, I appreciate that. So I think I understand the point then that an individual appeal would not be for a variance from the rules, but in fact to change the rules. And then the rules wouldn't change at all. Fair and plain, I understand that. In the same context, again, perhaps a bit of a small issue, but in the flow chart for appeals, TDAC figures prominently and in fact conclusively at the end of the appeal process. Again, and not to debate this with administration, but TDAC is a planning and development advisory committee. So again, it presupposes that development parameters apply to use conditions. And I'm not sure that I am satisfied that planning and development advisory committee should have anything other than an advisory role on development, not on use. So I struggle with that. My particular question though is that is it simply a shorthand way of indicating that the TDAC process will be used to conclude matters rather than saying as it does that TDAC itself will apply its deliberations and either approve or deny because of the circumstances, as I understand, in a proper development application for a variance. The planning and development advisory committee simply advises another individual in Parks Canada, I think called the Western Executive Director, who then makes an determination. And if that is the process, I think the public has a right to know that if there is an appeal and it goes to its ultimate conclusion, the decision will be made by an individual not residing in Jasper, who was employed by Parks Canada at that level of time. I just want to clarify that there's not an intent by this document to in fact empower the planning and development advisory committee to become a decision making body.
Thanks, Your Worship, through Deputy Mayor Kellerman. That's exactly correct. So admittedly, the flow chart is here in the fuller document is a simplified version of the process that would actually happen. Your Worship is exactly correct. That TDAC does not have, as far as I understand it, decision making authority. It is ultimately federal bureaucrats that actually sign off on things. And so then there are a couple of levels to sign off, going through both the local municipal local services office, the field unit superintendent, and up to the executive that, as Worship mentioned. So this diagram compresses all of that. You know, it could have just been easily, you know, parks for the ZMG application, but you know, the local process that would be visible to the public would stop at PDAC. You know, they would not, the public are not privy to anything, any recommendations from PDAC. They're not presented in a public format. And that sign off is, you know, those other layers of sign off are not particularly obvious to the public. I think this represents for the public conceivable, as Worship is correct, that there are a number of other steps that happen behind the scenes with parks. I'm quite happy to defer if you'll come back. I do have additional questions.
I'll go to Council Hall and then I'll come back.
Thank you, Deputy Kellerman. I have a question about, I know it's sidewalk seating is the subject, is it going to include the retail and the retail aspects to our use? So would a retail store with these parameters be included as well?
Deputy Mayor Kellerman for Council Hall, yes, that's correct. We are using a bit of shorthand of sidewalk seating. This can, would be applied to all of our uses that are allowed under the commercial space municipal bylaw. That said, we had zero participation in retail stores. We heard from the Chamber of Commerce that there are barriers to retail stores, additional staffing, they have to sort of provision if they're a lot of their goods. So it's unlikely in administration's view, and certainly from what we heard from the Chamber of Commerce, of seeing retail stores. That said, if a retail store wished to use this, they certainly could.
Thank you, again. Just on that point alone, and I hadn't thought of this earlier, but if I may then, if the requirement is that the walk around is the only solution, then there is a business on Patricia Street that has been using parking lanes for business other than a restaurant for many years, which could not be regularized. They couldn't use the sidewalk. A walk around would be of no benefit. A business which I think perhaps has been somewhat offside could not be regularized, even more than likely in twenty ten. Sorry for just a moment. I do have three questions, and I think all quick with respect to the recommendations and the alternatives, the options. Firstly, in previous years, hasn't been municipality of Jasper or another agency that has made a discretionary use permit application or has it been left to individual businesses?
Deputy Mayor Kellerman for, as Worship, my understanding is that last year was actually the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce applied for discretionary use permit that didn't go through the PDAC process, where the new recommendations to Parks Administration, but that one season would be explicitly presented that was a pilot. And so my understanding was that it went through the Jasper
With respect to the alternatives, again, just confirmation, I guess, that in the first alternative that committee perhaps provided different parameters, so in the schedule, the view of administration is that the parameters attached to these conditions now are likely to get approved, but other conditions are unlikely to get approved or not likely to get approved. How would you qualify that?
Thanks very much, Your Worship, through Deputy Mayor Kellerman. Administration is essentially pre-qualified these, if we could use that term loosely, with parks administration. We think that these are likely to be approved. We have not tested in their conditions, and so we don't know if they're likely or unlikely to be approved. I think if it would be fair to say that if council started to provide for installations that move closer to requiring developed, sort of building permits, that this ancient era, there's there's the use, what are you going to use this land for? There is the development, where are you actually, where are you generally, what are you building? And then there's specifically shows the construction, what you're closing for. And so we start to get to more in-depth construction. There are other laws like building code that apply. And so council started to provide for conditions that would start to get into heavy, heavier duty construction, both areas, and that would start to go into building permits, which is actually very specific. All of administrations, administrations recommendations here are intended to stay away from that area. If council wanted to provide other conditions with respect to colors or logos or jersey barriers or where else, we don't know exactly how that would go with parks. And administration will take your direction, they have to work through the processes outlined. So it really is up to council. And discussions with parks administration, we believe these ones would be very likely to be approved. And this would likely sail through other things, may require additional discussion. But council wishes administration to take those word. That's why you are left to represent the community. We'll take your direction.
Thank you, Beth. I think my last question for administration, with respect to the second of the alternatives that are listed, that is that committee direct administration to open the sidewalk seating program or applications without submitting discretionary use permit application. Does that alternative option presuppose that individual businesses would first have made the discretionary use permit application, or does it suppose that we don't really care whether you do or not? Make your application to us without having one for its candidate and we will do it.
Through Deputy Mayor Kellerman, it's the second, Your Worship, that alternative would suggest that the municipality would have full responsibility and capability to provide a municipal use permit under our municipal bylaw, and that there would be no expectation for businesses to go through the Parks Canada process. But in caveat, that a couple of important targets on that, and why it is not administration's recommended option. First, a business shows up and they start to get a building permitting, that is clearly would have to go up, you know, the area of parks or station that we have to send forward. It's not clear to administration, it's not exactly clear what enforcement mechanisms parks might have, the municipality chose to take the approach or amendment in that final ruling. And because does that lack clarity about what the consequences that might be, administration's recommending it? But it isn't, it also isn't clear to administration what enforcement mechanisms parks may have. There may be reputational relationship risks, you know, between the municipality and Parks Canada. And it may pose some uncertainty risk for businesses. But again, it also isn't clear that there would be enforcement mechanism, the municipality chose to take that approach. Certain that there is a mechanism for parks to object to that, that council chose that approach. Again, because there is so much uncertainty associated with that alternative that administration is recommending.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kellerman, through you to Mr. Given. I don't feel back to point six and Mayor Ireland or yourself in response to Mayor Ireland talked about the colors and I noticed the primary colors are included in the palette of colors in conditions. Yet I can think of numerous homes, businesses, awnings, canopies, highlights on buildings that actually do have red, yellow and blue. And when they talk about a neutral color by excluding the primary colors, how do businesses differentiate themselves on the street when they may be known by their colors or a combination of colors or, you know, want to make a distinction from their neighbor who uses one color? And they have a color that may be associated with their particular business. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Kellerman for Council Hall, I think that that is a fair point and that fair consideration. I will just say that from administrative perspective, we, in consultation with parks, judge these are the conditions that parks would be very comfortable approving. If municipal council wished to remove that requirement or vary that requirement in the conditions that would get to you and administration to take that forward to Parks and Art in that position. I think you make a reasonable point. And there's probably a bit of a judgment between providing a consistent, uniform aesthetic to the entire townsite versus allowing for that individual expression and individual identification of different businesses. And I think that what you see here is consistent with the practice from parks. But again, it's up to council, and that's why we've provided the alternative for you to apply different parameters for the submission process.
I have another quick question. The last couple of summer seasons, the Jersey Barrio barriers or pop-up tents have been allowed because we're recovering from a pandemic. Is that the reason parks is allowed?
You know, I think, and again, I came only into the second pilot season, but my understanding was that there's wide in the municipality, split administration and with the Parks Canada administration, that there needs to be some additional supports for businesses to allow them to operate through the pandemic. And that's why there is that really broad flexibility. I think what we're transitioning into is a bit of trying to regularize this program so that, because there's obviously demand. There was interest from the public. It was, you know, well adopted. And now everybody, municipal administration, Parks Canada, are trying to figure out, okay, so what should the rules look like going forward? And so I think it's a lot of variation, a lot of variety as a result of that sort of convergence or emergency use approval last couple of years. And what we're looking at now is how we transition to a more regulated.
I would argue that was still in that pandemic and businesses haven't recovered. And I I'm nervous that I would, I would support status quo for another year with lots of lots of looking at it for the summer and talking about it for the winter and coming up with climate looks for everyone. And I'm worried about businesses that don't have options to have a walk around. But going into the summer to expect or to ask, I can think of a few patios on the, on the cannot that have Jersey barriers and pop-up tents, that would be, I don't know if they'd survive. I don't know if they'd be able to survive. I, like, do you think, like, I know you asked, it's likely or unlikely, but one more year of, we're just, we're just starting to recover.
So to be clear, you know, Deputy Mayor Hall, are you through, sorry, Council Hall, that's what you say. Council Hall, are you through Deputy Mayor Kellerman? Just to be clear, the one more season of irregular use is provided for or by the set. Right? So he said all, so somebody can continue to do what they did last year with the exception of tents or umbrellas or jersey barriers having advertised. So if you had although had somebody had bright pink jersey barriers last year, they could continue to have jersey barriers, they just should keep them great. This is essentially the recommendation. So if administration was trying to find a balance of allowing some flexibility in the twenty twenty two season as we recover, while moving towards a more uniform.
Well, there are a lot of different arguments that I have to not support this, just because of some of the issues that Counselor Melnick mentioned, one of all colors, my jacket is blue, it's considered a neutral color. The fact that, you know, we're specifying them, I think it's just, that's a little bit of a stretch. I know that we're trying to appease some type of not real regulations. The other thing too is the setup and teardown of, you know, the walkarounds. We mean, it's hard enough for people to store jersey barriers and the demand that that puts on a business to either move in whole or tear up or set up and tear down every year, plank by plank or whatever it may be. And then naturally hold every, every single time to do that inspection and so on and so forth. So to me, I understand that, you know, that we're providing an opportunity here for people to expand, enhance their businesses. But at the same time, you know, what cost does it come to? Like many of my decisions, I try to filter it through, is this good for the community as a whole? What are the costs? What are the fiscal implications? What are the social implications? And then is it the right thing to do? So Mr. Given, it made the point that if this was in our control and businesses came to us to review it and So Mr. Given, it made the point that if this was in our control and businesses came to us to review it and. We saw the flaws in their argument, we'd say, okay, well, we have to go back and leave it. So we know it's flawed right off the bat. You know, the only problem is we don't support anything going forward. What happens? You know, we're not going back for any, so then parks would have a rule on it and then nothing's gonna happen, I guess. And so. We're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. It's very frustrating. You know, I'm quite close with a lot of people that will be facing some of these implications and and I feel their frustration, so. I'm really hesitant to move forward with with what's in front of us, but at the same time, what do you?
Comments, questions? I believe we have Mr. Jackson from Matures in Jasper on the swing, if this is the local council, if you have something to say.
While we're waiting, just on the, I I don't want to get nitpicky here, but. I apologize if this was addressed earlier, who and how was it decided that the neutral colors were decided between black, gray, white, brown and blue?
Deputy Mayor Teller for council, so administration has essentially pre-qualified the conditions less than actually with parks Canada, so that's through consultation of parks Canada administration. And then why what would likely be supported, I think I said earlier, what would we think that these would. Sail through these conditions. To be clear, the report is here for council's direction to council and that's why the first alternative is there that by different parameters. So I appreciate the challenge that raised council, this is may not feel exactly right. That's why it's here for a committee can tell us what feels exactly right to all of you and then administration will will take that forward for that submission, so. This is not a take it with a proposal. This is administration due to some landmark that I was likely to be supported. And if committee wishes us to take forward something different, then we will certainly make a best argument of parks on the direction.
Well, going forward that, you know, again, a neutral color, if we don't have the colors in there, it's up to the perception of whoever is going to. You know, have a discretionary use permit or whatever it is. So I'm hesitant to have colors in there. I will put all the colors in there because all colors can be neutral depending on what hue or shade they are. So, you know, I think councillor Melnick did make a good point. I know that, you know, this is getting down and nitpicky stuff. On this, but I I don't want, because if somebody does appeal, it it has to go through P that. So that could hinder the processing further if they want to have the wrong colors matching the business colors.
Deputy Mayor Teller, it's a process that's aligned in the report. If administration judges something is not fully compliant with, so. We're proposing that committee give direction on the parameters based on that direction, administration would take forward an application on behalf of the municipality for community-wide development permit. Discretionary use permit. Then after we receive that approval. Somebody came into something that appeared in administration to be contrary to what was approved, the first level of appeal would be canceled. So if we said, no, that light pink is not a neutral color. For example, and and business made that argument to council, council, no, we think that that light pink isn't neutral, well, the administration will give that direction. Or if it was substantial difference from what we had submitted to the. Parks approval process, then we would amend, seek an amendment to our process. So again, the other is going to be a council and there would be no expectation, there's no expectation whatsoever that an individual business goes through that first process. Okay, yet that I could really, well, is unless the business chooses the installation type that will cause a building product. There's nothing in the the installation is described and attached to it, it wouldn't require any bill cards. The company, someone comes and says, I want to build a people, I think, but then decided to go into building product. But council brought up. The first level of appeal through municipal council, that municipal council wanted to sanction something, essentially change the rules based on that argument. He can choose to do so and then this will administration would go to parks for a question of amendment for.
On the same topic, if I need to finish this one up. Would administration be put in an awkward position if. We left number six with a period at the end of COVID, not having colors in the bracket, would that? Would that put you in staff and? Have an awkward position.
I think so, through Deputy Mayor Teller, council, but I think administration will take whatever council's objection is, so if you want to have no period of color. I think that. Term light neutral is pretty broad, as as you very, very pointed out. I think that that might increase the number of. Many administration would probably take a cautious approach to that, ensuring that we're not too offside of things that we think would yield with on the parks tension. And so we would likely start to refer more things to council if they were. You know, if they were judgment calls, the more certainty the council can provide, the better. And I think that's the approach that we provided these. Conditions and is to say, we think this provides a fair bit of clarity that allows to make. Easy determinations to administration, so too many judgment calls, because when it starts to come down to judgment calls, and I think that is the challenge that I observed with the. Architectural guidelines, because they are a bit subjective and so what is neutral in color is subjective. Recommendation here from administration is to keep as close as possible of our.
Thank you for that. I have to ask some tough questions sometimes, just to get clarity.
Mr. Melnick, the president of Chamber of Commerce would like to speak.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Okay, thank you for the time, Deputy Mayor Teller. I just, from the chamber's perspective, at one point. Parks Canada reached out to a third-party consultation and the recommendation of that consultation was that the walkthrough was the preferred method. So one question we have is why now is parks going back against a consultation that they reached out for and recommending the walk-around when other businesses? I think each business, like many councillors have mentioned, it needs to be unique to each setting and each. Setup of each business to give them a fair advantage or a fair opportunity to participate in the program as we are still coming out of COVID. Many businesses have been closed all winter, waiting to see what happens through COVID. COVID is not over yet for a lot of the sectors. They're still recovering from years of being shut down or under restrictions, so. Why is parks now determined to make it more difficult on the businesses with potentially making it? Going forward, the businesses would not have this opportunity to participate for some of them as well. The colors, I appreciate the debate on the colors. For businesses, part of their brand is is their color, so I think it's important for them to be able to differentiate themselves from the their neighbor. If everyone is, everyone has all black barriers, how do you know who who's who out on the street? If anyone has any questions, thank you for the time, the opportunity to speak.
Any questions for Mr. Melnick?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Teller. Thank you, Mr. Melnick for your engagement on behalf of the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce. My question for for you in that capacity and just having knowledge of various businesses in the community. What is the timeline that business will require in order to be prepared for a summer season? Regardless of what that season might look like or what the parameters might be, that is to say, in short terms, what's the latest date? That council could make a decision that would work. For businesses to be prepared for the for the summer season if we accept that that begins on May fifteenth.
I I think, you know, we looked at a one-year phase out was what has been decided. I think at the time, the chamber was asking for two years. Just to give businesses time to to get back on their feet and if they want to become compliant within that two years, maybe it is next summer for some businesses, but for others, it might take them two years. And a full winter of being open and having the confidence that COVID is behind us to make that investment into. What is going to be required with whether it is the walkthrough or the walk-around with the the boardwalk, because it is significant and. Talking with suppliers and trying to find contractors, like contractors are booking far, far out and it might be something that needs to be built. Over the winter time and then be done in a way that is going to be feasible for multiple years going forward. Is wood the best way to go? Wood rots, wood wood deteriorates, is a composite material better that has a wood look or feel? I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's something that should be discussed moving forward.
I just had a a quick question, maybe to put Mayor Ireland out in a spot, but I'm looking at your recommendation. I know I know you had sort of worded out an alternate, I just wanted to do. Need to repeat it so I can have that in my head as I was listening to all the other. It was a few minutes ago.
Thank you, councillor Hall. I'm not sure that I. Added an alternative. I just had Mr. Given clarify in particular the second of the two alternatives that. That would assume that we would simply set applications regardless of status and. If Mr. Given wants to to reiterate about what I'm wrong, I think the caution from administrative perspective was that. If we choose that second alternative, there is uncertainty, there is, there is some. Uncertainty about whether or not parks can enforce what they want anyway, but it does leave the business sector in uncertainty. They would apply it to us, we might. Say, go ahead and somebody else might say, no, you can't and and they're they're caught in that dilemma, but I did question that. That second of the two hundred. Thank you. I am waiting for a motion so we can debate. I am not inclined particularly to the recommendation or to the alternatives. I think. One of the critical factors here was very well expressed by Mr. Given in his response to an early question about. Appeal process and he said, that is the part that will become visible to the to the public and that is the major problem there is that. Too many aspects of this are invisible to the public. And so my inclination and I asked. Young Mr. Melnick on screen about timing to see if I can get some some clarity around timing for us, but. My inclination now and. Under section one ninety-four of the municipal government act, I could do it unilaterally and be required to do upon. A request from a majority of councillors, that is. To call a special meeting and it occurs to me that we have Tuesday next week, which is not now scheduled. And if the business sector can accommodate a week's delay. I think they have not been sufficiently heard. Too much of this process unfolds in rooms where the public is not allowed. It's not about the color in the palette, it's about whether there should be a palette at all. And I I simply. Cannot accept the conditions. On the other hand, I understand that there is a business imperative to move this forward. Certainty has its own value and even if it's the certainty of rules that nobody likes, maybe that certainty is better than than uncertainty. So do we have a week to fight with this? I am inclined, as I say, I would rather we have preferred to do it with consent of council. To defer this question, call a special meeting for next Tuesday and invite either in this room or online. Members of the public to be engaged because I think that without that degree of engagement, whatever decision we make will be. Subject to second guessing by all. I would rather have more on the table than less, so that would be my inclination. Simply to defer this question to. Special meeting and invite members of the public and hold it in the sense that. Like the public currently, let people voice concerns that they have so that we can make. A fair and considered decision at the end of that and then.
Thank you, and I fully support that. I think it's a great idea and I think we should take advantage of opportunities like that when we have availability in the schedule especially. I like the direction. I think it's the smart thing to do. It's the right thing to do and I'll make myself available. Great idea. One other thing that I want to address is that, you know, we talked about the flow chart and everything. There's still a bit of a, to me, when we, when you go down the flow chart and you talk about the the application and whether it's it's fully consistent. Whether it gets disputed or not, it's gonna end up in the same place regardless, so and and that's just for this year's approval. Something that might cause it to go in a different direction, but I just, to me, it's it's a little frustrating, so I I'd like to hear more from the business community, people affected by this and. And even more so, members abroad.
Could we or would it be appropriate to invite someone from one of our partners in Parks Canada to? Yes, ask questions from that you wouldn't be able to answer.
Members of the public are always invited, it's a member, I don't think. I would be inclined to send a special invitation. I mean, they are an authority in their own right, they can conduct business as they choose and I think we should conduct business as. We choose, so if they do show up, they would be most welcome.
Sarah, do you think that we have a special meeting at one thirty minutes Tuesday as a regular meeting?
I'm open to to the time if there is generalized agreement that if that is the way to go, I I would be happy to make a motion. And whether it's nine thirty or one thirty, it's immaterial to me, I suppose it's. We're trying to attract interest from the public, so whatever might be the best, I will find days best for us.
I have a conflict that morning. I have a special meeting with community futures at one thirty, but. So one thirty would be better. We are eleven, anytime after it would be allowed.
But I will make a motion then, just to advance things that that. Committee per. Consideration of this request for a decision to a special meeting of council to be held. At one thirty PM. to a special meeting of council to be held at 1:30 PM on Tuesday, March 29.
Councilor Melman.
We ordered this to make a second motion.
Thank you, Councilor Melman. All in favor? Karen, do you have enough direction, Mr. Given?
Yes, absolutely. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller Rampe. So administration will bring forward the existing report to council on March 29, 1:00 PM. I will ensure that the Chamber of Commerce and public are aware, especially Jasper. And then the expectation will be that any parties who express their views on the existing report, we can not hear from administration, we can hear from council on the direction for amendments. Essentially, the referral is referring, the report was submitted today, to this new opportunity.
Councilor Melman.
Thank you, Councilor Keller Rampe, Deputy Mayor Keller Rampe. Where are we at procedurally for setting that special meeting? Do we need to set up a motion for that? And are we allowed to do that, too?
We don't. Under the provisions of section 194, I think I already have direction from a majority of council. And as I said earlier, I can do it on my own. Anybody that chooses not to in this circumstance, so relying on 141 or pardon, 194B, I have that direction, so I can call them. It's just an administrative matter, but we don't need to further that.
I figured you were confident, and I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Scene number is near quarter to 11. I'm going for short recess till 10:50, and we'll see you all back. Welcome back, everybody. So now we're on to 6.2, 2018, 2022, council strategic priorities in view.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller Rampe. I'm not sure if Council Waxer is back, because you're coming on screen now. Administration is presenting to council a brief review of actions related to the 2018-2022 strategic plan. Recommendation here is that you can simply receive this report for information. February of this year, council requested administration provide an update made on the 2018 strategic plan. That time, six priority areas, as listed in the report. And you'll see a table over a couple of pages, a very colorful table over a couple of pages attached, that attempted to identify as best possible some of the actions that this probably took related to specific events, where we did identify that as a restriction. I'll just provide, give it a couple. First, this is what's significantly turned over within administration. So your CAO position is turned over, of course, that term. We've had changeover in our directors, and maybe there's some sort of knowledge of loss. But more importantly, I think we need to acknowledge that the last council term really was defined by the outbreak of pandemic. And so action towards the parties that were identified by 2018 really adjusted early in 2020 as council, community, and split administration had refocused efforts on COVID response. So I I I think I would buy that for this council's consideration of the community. But having said that, administration does have a list of a number of items for council and the organization that made significant process, sort of progress on some of the items that were identified in the plan. This is helpful information for council to consider, both the specifics of, you know, what has happened, but also maybe just as you're thinking about your strategic plan process, how might we phrase something or what would be the strategic directions that we would phrase that can be acted upon? And I would do that in council to consider. But administration, of those requests, can provide this information, both that it needs by the council.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Councilor Melman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller Rampe. And I would like to just express my appreciation to administration. This was at my request, and I am happy to see how comprehensive the report is. And I do feel that the information will help us while we're down as we do look at the strategic plan for the next four years.
Thank you. Any other comments, question? I also would like to express my thanks to Mr. Given and his team for leading this task. Do you have any conversations you thought?
Just before we move from that, Deputy Mayor Keller Rampe, I think just in terms of process, maybe a motion to receive for information, that way there wasn't anything that had, and something happened with that.
Just before we do that, I'm happy to make a motion to receive for information. But I just wanted to confirm, I can't start a page, yeah, or I can. The second colorful page. It has bright yellow, I thought. Really desirable. Up in the upper right-hand section. Can you just confirm that there's a word missing there? It should be co-investment housing model, not the cool housing model?
Thanks very much for your suggestion. The co-investment housing model.
Subject to that, small change, I moved it council, set the report as a supervision. And I thank administration having put it together, and I thank Councilor Melman for having reflected.
All in favor? Karen. And it's actually 6.3, and this will suck housing, Mr. Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller Rampe. On September 14th of last year, committee requested administration draft a policy to address all aspects of municipal staff housing. So we are presenting that draft policy for council consideration. It is obviously why to acknowledge that Jasper's housing market is unique and essentially can constrain, characterized by low supply, low vacancy rates, and generally high costs. This housing situation presents a barrier for employers, and Minnesota Jasper, as an employer, faces those same barriers. The lack of available affordable housing presents a barrier to improvement and retention of qualified staff, which in turn impacts our ability by municipal service. And council has a very clear understanding of that, both from your business lives and from your involvement in the community. Administration on a bit of a review of Russia's fictional stand saw in similar municipalities that face similar constraints, that Whistler and Bamm, the municipality typically takes an active role in housing. And there are, I'll speak to some examples of the Whistler and Bamm policies are attached for your information. The municipality of Jasper has taken an active role in staff housing. We have an inventory of properties that are owned by the municipality. We have two sides of the device, and one single family home. Additionally, the municipality releases from a private owner a six-bedroom house that we have available that's typically used for seasonal or temporary staff. In the past, the municipality does not have policy covering this area. And so administration is making some recommendations. You'll see in the attached draft, highlights include the amendment, obviously, applying the Albert Rested Tennessee Act, which will be a certain base consideration. The some direction on how rents should be set at lower of 15% below the Jasper market rate. And that's a little bit to how administration proposes to establish with the Jasper market rate is. Or 30% of the employee's gross monthly income, which is accepted standard for affordable housing is by both in urban and national. There would also be a commitment to ensuring maximum occupancy of employees in this. I think the municipality would be desirable from this value to ensure that there are not units that are vacant, where there are people who are unhoused or being appropriately housed. So policy provides opportunities to work with the private sector. We have units that are not required for municipal purposes. There's that. It also makes specific provisions for different types of municipal employees. First, there are full-time employees that essentially will recruit into the community and the opportunity for them to have some transitional housing, considering low case of duty with the expectation that would be for a limited time period. And then separately, some consideration for seasonal or term employees who would not expect the effect of the state in Jasper on a long-term basis. So I think that essentially your summer employment, where we have to staff up for each summer season, and then that staff would likely pre-arrange for the rest of the year. And as I noted, the intention is that to ensure that maximum occupancy, that we would not leave units vacant. And in this case, where it would be vacant, that we would have the ability to work in the private sector or other other employers to ensure that those industries. So the draft is here for council consideration, and the administration is happy to answer any questions. If any wishes, they can direct administration to approve policy at the Senate, which is our necessary recommendation. Committee could also identify amendments they wish to see with policy and direct administration to return of the amendment policy, or they could make amendments incentive policy. That's all for you, Deputy Mayor Keller.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Questions? Councilor Melman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller Rampe, and through you, Mr. Given. One point I saw, 3.3.3 by the line where the transitional housing shall not exceed 36 months, and I found that to be overly generous. Any thought process why 12, 24, three years is a long time to be in a will will be typically you're trying to establish yourself in a new community.
Thanks very much, Councilor Melman, through Deputy Mayor Keller Rampe. Administration, you know, that certainly is a variable up to what council's consideration, you know, and desire is. We want to find a balance to ensure that they're, you know, we're recruiting somebody that we are able to provide some sensibility if we're essentially asking, and I've got this recent myself, you know, the consideration of saying, well, come to Jasper from somewhere else, relocate your your family, and we have housing for you. And and this is our housing market. I think that that a longer term may be necessary, given the tight market in Jasper, certainly from somebody from the other side. Looking, my first step was to look at the NLS listings. If you look at that today, there's one housing market. So for somebody from another community, that can provide a significant amount of uncertainty that might impact their decision for the Jasper community. Council felt that shorter term makes sense. It's your it's your policy, I guess, I think, from administrative view. The desire would be to help employees transitioning to regular housing in the community. I think having a fine endpoint provides that incentive to act. I think it's no questionable. So how much certainty if somebody can encourage them to do this?
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller Rampe, through Mr. Given. Just a few questions, but some observations as well. And I appreciate the policy statement, but I wonder about the use of the word retention. I recognize that the categories of housing that we may offer certainly affect recruitment, but because they are all timely, I'm not so sure that they they deal with retention in the same sense. And also, I wonder whether in policy statement, there is a slight disconnect with item 3.3.3. So that the policy statement says we may provide rental housing for employees of the municipality. Municipality capitalized, so that is the municipality. But 3.3.3 provides that some of that employee housing may be allotted to people who are not employees of the municipality from time to time. So I would prefer to see a little bit more consistency between the policy statement and and the actual outcome. Not that I disagree with what is proposed, but it's not exactly covered by the policy statement reminded. And just two wording issues that I have. With the rental rate limitation, so the lesser of 15% below Jasper market rate or 30% of the employee's gross monthly income, that might be defined somewhere. It's not defined in this policy. And I would just suggest that we might add to that phrase, 30% of the employee's gross monthly income from all sources. Because it's certainly possible that in this community, people who work for the municipality also have other jobs, and it would not be the employee's gross income from the municipality that is the determinant. So I would simply suggest that it is a collective low income that should be used as a measure to stick for what becomes subsidized housing. And finally, in 3.3.1, I would be more inclined to say that people are waiting for market housing to become available rather than a suitable government. I just entered into a realm of subjectivity. I don't know what suitable might mean. But we are encouraging people with transitional housing, hoping that they get into the market sooner rather than later. Otherwise, I'd very much like to use policy.
Councilor Melman.
Well, I wanted to wait, because I don't have any questions on it. I do appreciate the conversation of those adjustments, because I think that's good insight. I do want to thank administration deeply for getting us as part of this. I think it's going to help us in some future decision-making down the road when it comes to maybe having a conversation on accessing more housing for staff. And, you know, we could go forward with that until we have this in front of us. And now that we have in front of us, detail, the quality of detail really gives us a good process and outline and understanding of attracting and maintaining staff.
Do you have a counselor wanting to make an addition? Councilor Given.
Thank you for allowing me to do that. I would like to move that committee recommend council approve the municipal employee housing policy as an amendment.
Any other debates? Councilor, Mayor Ireland, sir.
I need some suggestions, but there's no clarity that that was accepted by anybody. So I, from administration's perspective, I think they deserve to know what those amendments are and whether they are approved by council. We don't have a specific wording, but there is a generalized understanding. But I think it's fair for council to let administration know exactly what they expect to come back to council for final approval.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. With those suggestions that the mayor made, if the rest of council is comfortable and understands what those are and administration is comfortable, and we use the term amendment in the motion, are we clear on what's going to come back to us next week?
Thanks very much, Councilor, through Deputy Mayor Keller Rampe. So the proposed amendments that I heard, so maybe it is exactly right to make sure that we're all on the same page. The things that I heard were in the policy statements, or the word retention, and to really focus policy on improvement, as the attention is to provide long-term housing. So it's a true improvement, so we can make that amendment. Under 3.2, an amendment to move to recognize the employee's total gross monthly income from all sources. I think this is the intention there. Under 3.3.1, employees relocating Jasper wait for market rate, a market peak, rather than a suitable one. And then the other point that was brought up, and the shortage, so that those are the ones that I heard that I would have presented for the council. Also, there is one that I was not proposing, that I didn't capture and propose to present to council, and I'll just highlight that. And that was the discussion about the off-season use and this consideration of the. How the policy statement doesn't speak to that necessarily. That is, I think, with intention, municipality of Jasper, the policy statement says the municipality of Jasper provides housing to our employees. For these reasons and under these conditions. And when we have a vacant one, administration will okay to make sure those are the ones. So, you know, the core purpose of policy, the policy statement are not focused on. Municipality being provider of employee housing for other tenants. And I just contrast this policy with Whistler where their housing body is explicitly. And you know, provide employee housing for all different types of employers and band, which explicitly is for municipal purposes. And they call associated agencies like various. I think that's proposed, the policy statement says our purpose in doing this is for municipal employees, also. Three point three says, but don't leave it in. If somebody else can use it because we're not using it, go ahead and administration. So your worship, that I didn't. That's the only one that I wouldn't have walked forward. I just want to make sure that that was clear for them. And if there was a desire to make a change. We have to give that question.
Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller. I can accept that and I appreciate it. My my concern in raising it is that the policy statement. Does not provide, it is permissive and I like that. So we may provide rental housing for employees. But within the standards. We are not, in some circumstances, providing rental housing for employees. We're providing rental housing for others. I accepted that's a wise use of the asset, but it seems to me to be contrary to. The permissive policy statement that says it might be used for this. If it's occupied by somebody other than an employee of the municipality. Are you offside of your policy? That's why I thought, okay, right? From a practical perspective, I absolutely agree with three point three point three, that if you don't have a need for. Occupied by somebody who is not an employee. Are you entitled under the policy statement to do that?
So and this may be a part of our evolving approach to policy. I think in the past, many municipal, many council adopted policies were based on only the policy statement. And so. I think in that. In that practice, the mayor's point about needing additional variable, what is what is allowed or required in policy. Under this proposed approach, our evolving approach where there's more detail, including council policy, you have finer grain control. And so rather than making sure that every specific consideration is contained in the policy statement. You also get control over some of the details of the policy, that's where the standard section, so that the policy is adopted by council is the whole. One, two, five, all of those points are council's policy. And if we're acting towards the total of the council's policy, we've got a long sight. And in this case, that proves three point three, which sort of provides that offer for the offices. If council would feel better about having that specific ability referenced in the policy statement, it is totally fine. It just provides additional. I don't know that it's necessarily this council's approved, this additional. Which is already, you know, the whole package is houses.
You happy with that, Mayor?
I can certainly accept it. I would have only added the word primarily in the policy statement. Provide rental housing primarily for employees of the municipality. But I I understand and because we are approving a policy with the specifics of three point three point three. Delk is probably the type, just personally preferred higher degree of consistency, but I can live with what Mr. Given has presented.
Councilor. Councilor.
Well, I was going to suggest using the the word primary in the in the statement itself because. I really like how your approach was that may does the word may gives us the flexibility, but at the same time, it doesn't really address the primary. Use to or purpose. So I'm comfortable with that. If that's okay by council, then I'm just going to open it up with, you know, three point three. Point three, I believe. If council wants to put any discretionary use on using the terms such as agencies or municipal parties. Just not have that element to just end by. You know, making reference to to that. So just part of the discussion and that's okay to have at the debate. You know, I know there's a motion on the table, but you know, I'd like to hear a little more if people do have other concerns. On the semantics.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller. I will say that I specifically looked at those other examples that were given and. Turned my mind to the question of agencies as has been done elsewhere and preferred the model that is before us, that is silent on that from from my perspective. It's better than.
So if I may reach out. Deputy Mayor Keller to Mayor again. If I was going to amend my motion. Is would that be a friendly amendment coming from you to put where primarily an error?
With or without it, I am content. My my reason for raising it in the context of the motion was to ensure. That administration and council were on the same page with respect to what the amendments look like. So, yes, if you wish to to change and adapt, but I have no objection to that, but. I'm not in a position where I would vote against the motion. But in the absence of that.
Okay, so going forward with the amendments made, I would like to also propose the amendment to. The policy statement to include housing. Provide rental housing primarily for employees.
Everybody okay with that? Any other debate on the motion? Short code question. Councilor. Council administration. Community conversations report, which is attached. Very well done, I have to say. Mrs. Redell, also mark that over to Mr. Given.
Sure, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller. Attached is the first iteration of the community conversations report. Following the recent adoption of our community conversations policy. I believe Mr. Dell is here and Mr. Reed is here as well. And they can obviously, because of the court, I would just say that this is evolving process and one of the things. In addition to the content that we're interested in, council's views on is the format. And so if you have any feedback on the formatting or the way the information is presented for the level of detail, we'd be happy to hear that as we evolve this practice. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Reed first and his team to introduce the report.
Thank you, C E O Given through Deputy Mayor Keller to council. I don't have much to say, of course. Ms. Redell is our resident expert on community conversations. I I will only say that this has been a very impressive five weeks I've been here now. This has been one of the strongest. Portions of learning this new job. I'm very impressed with how this process is going and I'm really looking forward to hearing how council receives this information. So without any further ado, I will just pass it right over to Mr. Dell.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, and through Deputy Mayor Keller and all of council, good morning. In front of you, you have the first iteration of the report on the first quarter of community conversations. So the report in front of you summarizes the first three months of community conversations that took place between January and March twenty twenty two. This is following the approval of the community conversations policy, which took place September twenty first. So administration took that direction in the policy and set out to establish a format for community conversations. As well as to promote the opportunity in the community and recruit participants. The first report summarizes all of the trends and opportunities identified over the past quarter. And going forward, a C E O given indicated administration would like to know what level of detail committee wishes to see in future reports. For this first one, we aired on the side of caution and just included everything during January, February and March. Sixty-three individuals took part in at least one community conversation. Many of those individuals attended more than once. So we have a non-unique total attendance of a hundred and eighty-seven between all twenty conversations that took place. There were participants from the public, private and nonprofit sectors participating regularly. Of the sixty-three unique participants, twenty-nine are municipal employees, twenty-one are from the nonprofit sector. Three are from the business sector. However, it is worth noting that two of those three. Participants are the Chamber and Tourism Jasper, still representing quite a few businesses. Two are from other levels of government and five are just individual community members. Between all of those participants, it creates a really rich mix of perspectives that are being shared. The adults conversation has the highest unique participation at twenty-five and the arts and culture has the lowest currently at fourteen. For the first three months, participants took part in a series of activities. So in January, we identified trends. Participants shared what they were each noticing and as is often the case when we're talking about challenges, opportunities always come out too, and those were documented. In February, the group picked up two of the opportunities that we thought could use some fleshing out. And brainstormed what kind of things do we have to do to get there, to seize these opportunities? And then in March, the groups were engaged in refining the notes, making final changes to the list of trends and opportunities. And of course, indicating their support that the notes were ready for this report. So with more than a hundred and thirty-five opportunities identified, community development reviewed all of them and grouped them into thirteen thematic areas. Which helped to form sort of that overarching priority, what kinds of priorities the community is looking at right now and identifying. So those areas are access and use of technology, financial stress, communication, social connection. Use of community spaces, mental health support, learning and training, transportation, promoting acceptance around COVID nineteen. Environmentally sustainable choices, communication around environmental responsibility, energy use and waste. And engaging children and youth in environmental responsibility. So part of this is measuring success. This is a new step to be doing so many more conversations this year. So in March. We surveyed participants to take in insight into their experience over the first three months. Feedback was generally positive and there were some great suggestions as well that will help inform our process moving forward. Each week after community conversations, community development has follow-up discussion to identify quick wins, things we can do easily. And response to what we're hearing in our community. And in the past quarter, we created. So these are examples of those. We created the masking signage that you see around town in response to a discussion about how. Unified messaging around restrictions and just promoting kindness would be really well received. We also took steps to support the food rescue program and are planning on situating the community fridge in the Jasper Activity Center. So that it can stay operational and really accessible to the community all summer long. And another example is we'll be creating an email list so that Director of Community Development, Mr. Reed. Can send out timely updates on the activity center renovation. So overall, the first quarter of community conversations produced really detailed opportunities. And the format is accessible, so I do feel like it's important to take this opportunity for council and for anyone listening. To remind folks that anyone can join if you live in the community or if you work for an organization that serves Jasper. And we do recognize that not everyone can make it to the scheduled conversations. We have a host your own community conversations initiative that's intended to make sure that we receive diverse cross-section of input from the whole community. The detailed report is attached, pardon me, and I am available to answer any questions I can as best I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Redell, and thank you to your team. It's been a pleasure being on the early childhood community conversations. I really enjoyed it and it's an excellent report. Council questions? Councilor.
Well, at the risk of adding more rhetoric to a council meeting than I regularly do. I just wanted to say how appreciative I am about the process entirely and what started out. As community conversations in some areas and having that morph and expand into, you know. Going from actual committees and and public engagement is really important and for those of you that do take a public engagement course. Down the road, this is kind of one of the things that I was looking forward to coming to fruition. When we first started out on this adventure together and how it's transpiring is inspiring. So thank you to all behind the scenes that are making this happen, those who planted the seeds to to have it come to where it is today. And I really look forward to growing this and making it a useful tool. You know, one thing that that we have to differentiate sometimes is communication to the public is a lot different. Then or communicating with the public than than and it's different than public engagement. And here we have. An opportunity to provide two things at the same time. And I think it's really helpful for the community as well.
Thank you, Councilor Hall.
I also too just want to express my appreciation for this report. I think it's very timely in ahead of our strat planning sessions. When I was in Edmonton last week for my strategic planning course, I was able to actually speak to the room about this program we have and. As well as even people seem very happy. Thank you very much, Mr. Dell. This is an amazing report.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller. I too appreciate the report. I really do appreciate. The new direction that was achieved after the really lengthy discussion that I think these community conversations are the way to go. I am only going to suggest, however, that we keep a very close eye on. The proportion of public members attending. I had expected somewhat different numbers and I think, say, we're on the right track, but we have to watch. Forty-six percent of the participants are municipal employees. It is not yet the community conversation I was hoping to have. And so I I think it is on all of us to try and attract more individuals from the community. To all of these sessions and hear that voice. This should not be just an opportunity. At a sort of a fifty fifty level to have some people engage with that many useful staff. So. As I say, I appreciate the report. Really interesting to have those numbers. I am thankful that they are there. But I think it indicates that we still have ongoing work to really make this what I hope to be a full community conversation. And not limited with forty-six percent of the participants being municipal employees. But I thank you for the report and I thank you for all the work and I appreciate that. There needs to be some municipal employees absolutely at each one of these conversations because. Individuals like Ms. Redell and others who facilitate the conversation are absolutely indispensable and we mentioned George, I thank you for that.
Good hair. Certainly go ahead, Councilor Hall.
Sorry to jump back in. Ms. Dell, I have a question for you. Do are these conversations recorded and then streamed? After the public can't be there on a Wednesday between one and three, are they able to watch them at a later time?
Thanks for the question, Counselor Hall. Through Deputy Mayor Counselor M P tells council, it's not. Thanks for the question, Counselor Hall. Through Deputy Mayor Counselor MP tells council, it's not recorded and livestreamed. The notes from the conversations are also only shared with participants, like with folks that have signed up. So that isn't a step that we've taken at this time.
Counselor Mona.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller MP, through you to Ms. Riddell. I noticed that there are call-ups on a number of things. As things are put into place, just a policy and our heard specifically to advertising to be done in a certain color was suggested by the seniors, once that is put in place, will that drop off the list of items on the community conversations? I mean, it's great to hear from the individuals, and if we incorporate that as a policy or as a going forward, does it really need to stay on this list? I'm just trying to think as we continue with the conversations, we're going to have a lot of things on this list and it would be good to have a page where we part what we've achieved for reference and isn't part of the overall summary. And this is a very good summary. It captured so many things, but we do need to keep the list manageable.
Deputy Mayor Keller MP, if I could step in.
Certainly.
You know, I think from administration's perspective, the purpose of community conversations, and this is included in the policy, administration is on the lookout for quick wins, as Ms. Riddell identified, things that we can do within our current scope of authority, approvals from council and budget. There isn't an intention, I don't believe, that next time you can see these items, plus a whole bunch of other new items. I think that you would see a whole new list of what the conversation is being over the course of the quarter. And administration would identify, you know, any things that came up that we could act on again within our current scopes. I think the purpose here would be for council to essentially be seeing this over the course of the year and as you get to budget, thinking about the things that you had heard. If there are suggestions from the community for specific actions that are outside of the administration's current capacity or scope or something, then, you know, we would be obligated to come forward in some other form and propose that to council. And, you know, there may be those things occur through the course of community conversations. If they were material and seemed in alignment with the direction that council set, you would likely start to see us bring those to the council table. But I think we want to be cautious about creating confusion in the community about, well, I've said something in community conversations, so something should happen. Right? There's a bit of a dynamic tension there that administration is trying to balance. We'll sort through that and want to make sure that we're not engaging in things that are outside of our approved scope. And certainly, Ms. Riddell and Mr. Reed, their team, they've done a great job of acting on things. So today, we can do that. We don't need correction, we can act on that. So don't expect to see these two hundred items come back to you again with another two hundred items, and that thus can attract that. That's what our motion action list is for, for council to give us correction. But for now, we want to make sure that council is seeing and hearing the sentiments of the community. And that's up to you to decide if there is something you want to hold and give us correction.
Go ahead, Counselor Mona.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller MP, and through you to Mr. Given. Thank you for the clarification. And I do appreciate that that does add to me some clarity as to how we move forward. But also, I'd like to thank Counselor Hall. This is important information to have going into the strategic planning, and I think well timed that this was brought up to us prior to us getting away. So thank you both, Ms. Riddell and Mr. Reed, for ensuring that this had made it to the council table.
Can I have a motion to receive the report? Sorry, Counselor Alexa.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank Ms. Riddell for all of the work. There was lots of very interesting information in there, and I really appreciate the attention to quick wins. I think often those things can be small tweaks in the way we do business that can be improved. And so I really appreciate that. I also wanted to speak to the fact that I think each of us as individuals in conversation with the community residents, reminding people that there is the opportunity to participate in any one of these community conversations. It's been my experience that personal contact or face-to-face or conversations will help people develop comfort for joining these types of conversations. And I think, speaking to what Mayor Ireland said, I think it is important to get a broader range of people in the community actively involved in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Alexa. So Counselor Lawrence, thank you, Mr. Reed. Counselor Hall, and let a motion to receive the community conversation reporting recommendations for the first quarter of 2022 for information. Thank you, Mr. Reed and Ms. Riddell. Alberta Winter Games, Alberta, Ms. Given.
Yes, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller MP. At the last council meeting on, sorry, the previous meeting on March eighth, the council correspondents from Robles, Alberta, asking if they would like to submit a bid for Alberta Winter Games. At that time, the director of administration for each of the four regional municipalities just required their level of interest. I did that, so this is the report portion that satisfied this direction of council. And just dialogue with the CAOs that's intended to mentor our county. At that time, none of our councils had been taking out this issue. They were broadly of the view that it was likely it would be, just given the timeframes and the amount of community access that it would be to submit it. That said, we agree this may be a topic that at a political level, councils would want to have a discussion with our council. So there was an interest that council could raise so that we could prepare for the next uplifting that comes around. The Alberta Winter Games, some of the ones that are hosted are some names. There are also the bus names and others that these operations afford. And CAOs, for the intention felt that at the level of council, they want to talk about that. We would also receive that direction, but their application was that there was not an encouraging issue or within the administration's intent to.
Ms. Given, any questions for Ms. Given on that? Thank you. Alberta Neural Festival, Ms. Given.
I had earlier declared a conflict of interest on this matter under section ten point two of our Code of Conduct for Elected Officials by law, so I will excuse myself. Let me know please when the discussion moves on to the next agenda. I will return.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller MP. This is actually Mr. Reed. His charge is to have a look at.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Go ahead.
Hello again, Deputy Mayor Keller MP and council. So indeed, administration took this item from council's direction and we, I personally met, well, spoke on the phone several times with the organizers of uplift. And we are working together to promote some of the items that council saw as positive or worth investigating further. We are right now speaking with our insurance carrier to see whether or not there are any savings to be had if the uplift festival were to come under the municipal umbrella. So that's one option we are pursuing. We have found some quick wins, if you will, some walls that we know we could offer to the uplift festival should they need them this year. We are also working on some capability of partnering with uplift and in essence, supporting or sponsoring, if you will, the idea, pardon me, of that movable canvas that council spoke of. There are certainly some logistical items that we will pursue on our end, such as barricades and pylons and what support we can offer there. Also, some of the, I guess, collateral impacts, like where do all these rented lifts get stored every night? Who or how will they get charged up for those that are electric? And basically, that's the nutshell of where we've gotten to so far in our partnership. Other than, there's one other issue we spoke of being proactive about it, which would be having a staff and certainly council as well, aware of the project itself or the festival and being able to speak to it as far as, say, alley closures and where that information might be able to be found. So that's basically the verbal report. If you have any questions, of course, I'm available.
Any questions for council, Mr. Reed?
Ms. Mayor Keller MP, sorry, just to say, to close that off, so administration and Mr. Reed's team are identifying opportunities to support the festival within the existing budget. I think the only additional direction we would need from council is if there was something specific that you wanted us to do that was outside of the approved budget or a certain condition of the budget. If council is looking to make a material financial contribution of cash to the festival, we would need motion of direction to do so. Absent that motion, at Mr. Reed, I will find ways that we can fit within our existing budget to support the festival. And ideally, those would be ways that we would have a net financial benefit to the organization, such as the, you know, paying under our terms. That's essentially a different conduct this year. If the festival continues in future years and if they want to make a request to council for material financial support or cash grants, administration has also provided them the process to ask for that. So I think from administration perspective, we'll work with them. Mr. Reed, this team will work with them. We'll provide as far as we can, and we would consider the matter closed at the council level unless there was other specific direction.
Counselor happy with that direction? Go ahead, Counselor DeMola.
Yeah, I'm very happy with that. And, you know, it's a small step forward. I am really looking forward to seeing this blossom and then other initiatives come forward. I think this is going to start other community involvement issues.
So exciting.
I have a question for Ms. Given. If we did decide we wanted to give money this year, but is there somewhere to come from? Is there? Or is it because we're in approved budgets, just not an option?
So council wished to provide the direction to administration to provide financial support to the festivals here. I suggested the best way that you got to direct administration to identify an appropriate funding source for blank dollars to as a grant. So in terms of format of the motion, I think that would be the right way, because we would have to go back to our budget. So obviously, we're a little year in and we can't say that we have, well, it doesn't look like a stand-up money for the second year. We could look at reserves. That was an opportunity. Look at programs that have started before. But council giving direction to us to go in about the amount of money you want to provide and basically tell us to go away and say, see if there's a lot of money that's appropriate for that and recommend.
I don't think that time would allow us to, or next, we could cut pretty short, or that's ready, we can make a decision on that.
I think given sporting times, if they run into a problem, they could always come back at the end of the festival and listen to us if we needed help. You know, the option could be left open to them. We had done that in the past. Counselor Mona.
I'll defer to Counselor Hall first.
Counselor Hall.
Yeah, no, I'm really happy with what's in front of us. I just was curious, because you did mention it. I just wanted to know what process would have been, but I think what we're doing is great. I think that's really awesome.
I agree.
And you need a motion?
Maybe for this in the previous, I didn't just a motion received.
I just, I did have one more question for administration through you, Deputy Mayor Keller MP. Ms. Given. Or the next step, if there is a request for future funding, would that have to come ahead or during budget deliberations that we've received in the past from other agencies?
Counselor Mona, yes, that's correct. Administration, administration, I think Mr. Reed's already had a discussion with you. And I was just saying, hey, this is, we'll do it again with you this year for future years. Make sure you're pressing, I think, overall, the approach would be to ask community organizations to board early in the year, prior to summer, if there needs to be one. So we can incorporate those into the question presented to council. And there would still be an opportunity for some of the ones that had council-led discussions, if there's some other additional. That way, it can be incorporated for the whole year for council.
I have a counselor to make motion to receive the Alberta Winter Games report. Information. Thank you, Counselor Alexa. All in favor? And can I have a counsel to make motion for the Alberta Neural Festival, universal support information? Counselor DeMola, all in favor? Thank you. Mayor Ireland, welcome back to the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Correspondence, we have no correspondence sitting. And Ms. Given, motion action list, Ms. Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. So we're closing a bunch of changes to the motion action list. As you can see, margins went down and then the rest that we're hoping to get for council to go in large and just give a report those that we're going to ask for another those April. And so you can see the revised target dates listed in the report. So those ones, I think, are highlighted. Additionally, I would recommend that we could remove the municipal staff housing. That is presented September fourteenth. That is presented today. Can you show that on council, the same with the twenty twenty-two constitution plan? That was presented today. The side box city and retailer extension program, that motion was a recommendation was to let the council choose for that to a special meeting. And so that has been covered. There may be additional actions that arise from council's next review that should be the direction of the increase that has been satisfied. And the Alberta Neural Festival and twenty twenty-four, the Winter Games, I have said also.
Any questions for Ms. Given? Can I have a motion to receive the motion action list and the recommendation soon? Counselor Hall, all in favor? Council representation on various boards and meetings. Mayor Ireland.
Just a perspective upcoming meetings, there is a partnership initiative meeting tomorrow that I will be attending. I have Zoom calls with the mayors of Danfens and Kenmore scheduled for Thursday afternoon. And it occurs to me that we agreed earlier today that I would call a special meeting for next Tuesday. Yet done that. When I do that, the meeting is restricted to those specific items that are missed in the notice. And so I'm quite prepared to give it a couple of days before I actually get noticed in the event that there is anything that administration might perceive as also requiring a decision of council.
a decision of council since we will not otherwise sit as a council until the third Tuesday. So I just, as a note, I won't rush the calling of the special meeting. I'll give the administration a little bit of time to consider whether there is anything else that needs to be addressed by council, because otherwise it would be a long time coming.
Mayor Ireland, just on that, when I was away, I attended last Friday Evergreens Foundation meeting. And we made a decision on the budget for twenty twenty-two, which is a six point two five million dollar increase to capitalization. Because I was away, I don't have all the paperwork, which I'm planning to go see the Evergreen administrator this week. So at that meeting, I would like to present that report. And because on April twelfth, unless I give you the report, Mayor Ireland, on April twelfth, I will not be here because I have to go to Cowboy for the Evergreen with Evergreens to the seniors conference. So I'll be gone from April tenth to thirteenth of November for those days. So I will not be able to chair that meeting. So that's in my home.
So if I understand you correctly, then we're the special meeting or next Tuesday, you would like to just have the opportunity to present.
Yeah.
As always.
Thank you. Councilor Mona.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller, regarding council representation on various boards. This Friday, we'll have a TransCanada Yellowhead quarterly coordinator that I'll be attending via Zoom. As well, Friday, the annual general meeting for the Jasper Yellowhead Historical Society, which will also be in the evening at, and I'll be attending that very soon as well.
Thank you, Councilor Mona. Councilor Mona.
Tomorrow night, I will be well, actually, tomorrow is the community conversations. Environmental responsibility, as well as attending the course on municipal corporate financing finance. Zooming through the E O E P. And Thursday is a Jasper Community Team Society for the process.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller. I attended a live award meeting last Sunday. And I will be off to the Friends of the Library Casino fundraiser at the end of April. And I too will be attending or registering for the E O E P. Hope this is. Thank you.
Councilor Baxter.
Last Wednesday evening, I I attend or last Tuesday evening, sorry, I attended the community conversation hosted by the RCMP. And there were about, I think, about ten community residents with who expressed concern about the speed in of traffic in the community and also concerns about victim services.
Upcoming events, five festival fundraising, April one, April fifteenth. Thirteenth annual Jasper Pride Festival and Sea Festival, April one to ten. Strategic planning session on April fourth to sixth in plan. So there will be no council meeting on April fifth. Jasper Chamber of Commerce General Meeting runs the April twentieth, Shadow Jasper, at seven thirty A M. Metna runs the April twentieth, five to seven at the dead dog. Emergency preparedness week, May one to seven. City of Municipal Address, Jasper Chamber of Commerce, May eleven. Government Committee, May seventeen, nine thirty, four star cross Canada. And we will have a special council meeting at twenty thirty on March twenty ninth. As you all said. Okay, it is eleven fifty-five. May I have a motion to move in camera? Thank you, Councilor Hall. All in favor? I would like to thank the members of the public for joining us. Mr. Given, when we come out of in camera, will there be any business that we need to bring back to public?
No, Deputy Mayor Keller.
So let's thank all the members of the public that joined us today and all our members of staff. Thank you.